Okay, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Mr. Cusick, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Best.
For being here for the January 27th Board of Education meeting. My name is Kelly Davis. I'm going to introduce you to Board Member Nikki Hudson, Board Vice President Amber Epling Skinner, Treasurer TJ Cusick, Superintendent Dr. Trent Bowers, Board Member Stephanie Harless, and Board Member Jennifer Best. If you're able, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda for the Board of Education meeting?
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or changes to the agenda? TJ, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. And do we have any visitor? No visitor comments. Okay, well then, we are going to jump right into our special education presentation. So I'll invite Kim Marani up, and she will tell us and give us a great presentation. Looking forward to it.
As Kim makes her way and gets situated, I just want to take just a minute to express a few words of gratitude and acknowledgement. First, to Brian Morgan and our Worthington Education Association. Really appreciate their invaluable collaboration throughout this process with Kim and her team. Also like to take a moment to recognize the many members of our guiding coalition who are in the audience today. Thank you all for being here. The work that you have been doing is certainly time-consuming and at times really challenging, but I want you to know how much we value your voice and your involvement in this process. So thank you. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank Kim and her incredible team for their commitment to the work. I'm truly grateful for the way that they've gone above and beyond to support our students and our staff. So thank you. I think you'll enjoy tonight's presentation. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie. So, good evening, Dr. Bowers, President Davis, Mr. Cusick, and members of the board. We're excited this evening to share an update on the progress we've made this year in addressing the recommendations from the special ed audit. My name is Kim Marani, and I get to serve as the Director of Special Education. And joining us tonight, as Angie shared, we have quite a few members of the multiple coalition groups that we created this year, as well as a couple of the special ed administrators. Unfortunately, two of the coordinators are ill today, as well as I've gotten several text messages of other coalition members that wanted to be here, and something definitely seems to be going around. So Jake Guthrie, who I owe a lot of credit for the slide deck, he has helped a lot with that piece, and Beth Raina Williams are both home tonight, but I did want to recognize Renee Brenson is here as one of our special ed coordinators, and Dr. Winland for the preschool principal, she's here with us as well. And most all of these young ladies here, as well as a couple of our principals, are here in support of the coalition groups. So, tonight, we really want, as Angie already shared, to really recognize the time and effort that they have put into multiple meetings during the school day, in the evenings, sometimes after school, that they've spent time on the phone in Zoom meetings with us, and some of the consultants from New Solutions. So we greatly appreciate that. So we began this process back really in the fall of '23, and on this slide here, you'll see that in partnership with Brian Morgan and his members through the WEA, we worked with the consultants from New Solutions. You'll recognize Nate Levison, he was here last year and presented to the board as well. But the other members there, Dave, Caitlin, and Steve, have been doing a lot of this work with us this year. So the actual title of the audit was "Improving the workload of special education staff and the outcomes for students with disabilities in a cost-effective manner." So the primary goals of this audit were, or still are, enhancing the workload management for special education staff, improving outcomes for students with disabilities, and ensuring a cost-effective approach in achieving those improvements. So through the thorough study all last school year, oops, I think I switched one, there we go, all last school year, we did an incredible amount of data review with the consultants from New Solutions, and an audit of overall services that we provide throughout the district. They recognized high areas of commendation for us. Some of those included the MTSS process, the literacy training, the level of training we have for our regular ed and special ed teachers, the feeder pattern alignment for our district programs, and the deep level of care and concern and commitment that our staff, teacher staff, and leadership have for our students. They also did identify five areas for us to focus, and we call those areas of opportunities. So we were looking at interventions and student support in the secondary settings, staff workload and strategies to enhance efficiency for our staff, instructional coaching, primarily targeting on the secondary level, preschool entry and exit pilot program, and then the creation of an administrative role to address behavioral and mental health supports consistency across the district. So this next slide shows kind of that roadmap. Like I said, we had a lot of that data review last year. Starting this summer, we designed and created that evaluation pilot for the Sutter Park preschool program. We collected a lot of data using the platforms of VISED that you've seen in a presentation, and then our same goal, which is our IEP software. So we pulled data from those platforms. We had in-person meetings with the consultants from New Solutions and virtual meetings, and then created these coalition groups that I'll go over with you here shortly. So then moving into fall, we continued planning in all of these areas. We created some smaller work groups to kind of expedite the progress a little bit. Moving now into the winter, we have some finalized documents that we've created in collaboration with our staff and New Solutions, and we've really worked and refined that workload process that we're preparing for full implementation in the fall. And then we have one more, hopefully, we're hoping that it'll be our last in-person meeting with the consultants, and they're coming out again on February 5th, and we'll have meetings with all the coalition groups to finalize some action plans at that time. So we're going to go through the coalition groups now. So the first of the five areas that we've been working on this year is interventions in secondary. So on this slide, you will see the names of the coalition members. You'll notice there's district-level administrators, a lot of the directors that you see in the room sit in these meetings with us, our parent mentor who's here tonight, Shannon Daly, she's involved in these. We have secondary building administrators, Brian is sitting in and working with all of these coalition groups. And then we have special education and regular education teachers from both middle school and high school working on this with us as well. So the goal of the secondary intervention was to create a structure for our students where they will have their intervention with additional time with content-strong teachers. So we're really looking at how we're providing their services to them, and if there is a better way to do that. So this next slide is going to share with you some of the highlights that this coalition group has had. So the first steps that we did was we spent some time comparing what practices we had across the middle schools, as well as between both high schools. So with the support of New Solutions, there was a design tool that we used where principals like Jody Robinson is here tonight, she's on that coalition with us, so some of the structures that she has in place in her middle school may look a little bit differently, say, than one of the other middle schools. So we gathered all that data and then used that tool to evaluate those. This refers to like different settings. So when I say that, I mean learning center, you'll hear those terms like classrooms, assist periods, they called it sometimes different things at different buildings. So we were just trying to get a pulse on where everything is. From that work, then they were looking at developing intervention plans for both middle and high school, where we're looking at research-based best practice for our students in terms of the intervention, and making sure that they're sitting in those spaces and spending that time with really content-strong teachers to give them that extra scoop of support. So we have one class at Worthington Kilborn High School that we're already implementing prior to even working through this this year, where we have a learning center that's dedicated to students with specific math goals with a strong, content-strong intervention specialist in math in that classroom with them. So those students now have access to their general math class, as well as an additional intervention period for math. So that's the model that we're looking at, and we will use the data from the success of that class at Kilborn to help us with their future planning moving forward. The second coalition group is working around that staff workload coalition. Again, you're going to see a lot of the same members in terms of district-level administrators, Brian Morgan, our parent mentors there, we have a lot of related service staff, and we have several of our speech pathologists in the room with us here today, as well as intervention specialists across all grade levels. So this group collaborated with New Solutions to examine how our teachers allocate their time each day. So we're considering factors such as the required services on the students' IEPs that they serve, the group sizes of their interventions, the planning time, meeting time, and other times that they have in terms of writing their documents and that sort of thing. So when we talk about workload, we understand that special ed teachers all have a legal caseload of students that they can serve, so there's a number of students that the law allows them to carry on their caseload. However, the process goes a little deeper than that when you talk about caseload versus workload. So it actually, workload will evaluate the time that it takes that teacher to serve those students on their caseload. So for example, you may have two elementary teachers that both have 12 students on their caseload. Some students on that caseload may require two hours of service intervention per week, and another student only requires 30 minutes of service on their IEP that week. But that makes that workload very different for those two teachers, or for that teacher that has that. So address that, so to address that, the way we went about trying to figure out this process is we did a master download of all of the services that the students received. So we took each building, and in collaboration with their teachers, we downloaded the services from that teacher, and then the teachers were able to go into these spreadsheets and basically claim their service. And where that crosses over a little bit, say you have a Level 1 Wilson trained teacher, and you have students that need that level of service that are not on that teacher's caseload, we're still going to have that teacher work with that student because that's the best person to provide that intervention. That teacher is that content-strong teacher. So that intervention specialist, when they're claiming their services, would also be claiming some services for students that aren't on their caseload, but they are on their workload. So when you have two or three general intervention specialists in one building, say in elementary, we have one that's focused on reading, so she may be providing reading, she or he may be providing reading services to students that are not on her caseload because she is the best person to provide that service. So the way that we, this tool was created, allowed each teacher to claim everything that they're responsible for within their day. And then we've seen some summary of that, the results of that, and they look really good, and we're excited for that February meeting where we're going to analyze a lot of that more closely, identify some pressure points, and kind of finalize what that process will look like, putting some tweaks, filling out some tweaks that we may come across with Okay, the final coalition group was around instructional coaching. So this group, again, district administrators, we had a good group of general education teachers, our instructional, current instructional coaches joined us for this, our gifted coordinator, again, Brian, building principals, and our parent mentor. The primary focus of this group was to expand instructional coaching for general education teachers, particularly at the secondary level, to help better support their process and their ability to support their struggling learners that are in their classroom. So the progress highlights for this group is throughout this year, we've carefully evaluated the success of the current coaching model, which is really strong at the elementary level, and moving into some middle school settings as well. We were looking at ways to potentially enhance that and maybe replicate that, exploring an outline of what a coaching model could look like if we grew that into the secondary level. We talked a lot about research-based best practices in terms of coaching, especially at that secondary level, looked at some frameworks defining like where are the priorities for coaching, focusing on resource allocation to make sure that it's a balanced approach as we go forward. as we go forward. In February with this group, we're hoping to identify those key focus areas and create a phased-in rollout plan. This is one area that when we talk about this audit is cost neutral. This is the one that probably has been the most challenging for us because we're trying to figure out the best way to create a coaching opportunity at the secondary level in that cost-neutral manner. So it's been a little more challenging, but we're brainstorming some creative ideas and continuing to make progress. So we do feel like we're going to get there with that, it's just been a little bit slower. We've spent a lot more time in the discussion, trying to figure out where the priorities might lie in that process. So as you heard me mention earlier, one of the recommended focus areas for us was to really evaluate how we transition our youngest learners into the preschool setting. So a key part of that work is ensuring that we're accurately identifying students with disabilities when they need that, while carefully distinguishing between a lack of exposure at that young age, or a lack of time for growth, and the difference between that and a true disability. So Sutter Park, who, obviously Dr. Winland's here, and most of this front row here is our staff members from our Sutter Park Coalition group, and this pilot that we're working on, it's an exceptional program in our district. They provide outstanding support for our youngest learners. This year, what we've been trying to do there is to help them with the process of focusing on the MTSS implementation and that Tier 2 level of support. It's more challenging at the preschool setting because at an elementary, when a student is struggling, we have that student there at school with us all day, most cases. At preschool, they come to us from community referrals, and then they go back to their community setting, they go back to their daycare, or back to home, or the babysitters. So we don't have that same level of access to them as we do at the elementary level. So we're really examining how we can expand that MTSS intervention options for those students. The other piece of the preschool pilot is the evaluation team for those initial referrals. So we've created a new team that consists of, some school-age therapists have come down to do some of that work, knowing that these are students that are going to be transitioning in. So we have two speech pathologists, two occupational therapists, two school psychologists, and then Sutter Park staff in terms of their teachers, working on a process where the students, when they're referred for an evaluation, they come in, and we have time to spend with them, and do some initial informal screening with them, and then make some informed decisions, where getting our eyes on and spending some time with the students. Out of that process, then, we work together. It's been a great collaboration this year under the leadership and support of Dr. Winland, and then myself and my coordinators have been over at Sutter Park helping with this pilot this year quite a bit as well. So throughout the course of the rest of this year, we'll continue to collaborate with the Sutter Park staff on this, and then we'll review the data and the outcomes of the pilot, and then use that information to plan for upcoming years. Okay, the last area that was recommended for us was the leadership role to oversee behavioral and mental health initiatives. And we are fortunate, we have been very fortunate enough to go ahead and fill this position for this year, and Nathan Kellenberger has been in that position all this year. On this slide, you're going to see some of the highlights of the work that he's done to include a positive parenting process, the program that he's implementing. He's also done some PBIS work, obviously a lot of work with the mental health team. It has been a great experience already working with Nathan. We're so excited to have him as a part of this team. I'm not going to share a lot of the significant impact that he's already made, because you will be hearing more from Nathan in April. He's on your agenda to present to you at that time. But he has been a great partner, and he came to see me before I came down here tonight, already talking about what it's going to be like in April. So he's very excited to be in front of you then. Okay, so if you had to just grasp some key takeaways of the presentation tonight, and in summary, where we have been and where we have gone with the special ed audit, we would say thus far this year, so we have fully implemented the preschool evaluation pilot. We have secured the leadership role for the behavior and mental health support. We'll have the workload process ready for full implementation with our special education staff in the fall of '25. And we have planning for a service delivery model shifts, starting small in the fall, and then we'll build those over time as we see success with those. So those are the four areas that would be the key takeaways from our work this year. So the next three slides are just some comments. So like I said, again, we've recognized some members of the coalition here tonight and the time that they've spent. So going on about, you know, a year and a half into this multi-year process, it seems at times like it's been long, sometimes it seems a little bit tedious, sometimes I feel like we might get stuck, but then we make great progress. The key point is it's been a very collaborative effort between Brian, his members, the administration, the coalition members, and everyone who's been a part of this process. We honestly didn't think we would be this far, as much as we say sometimes it seems slow. When you sit and look at all of the work that's been done already, I'm very proud of everyone for the progress we've made. I have to again just point out, Brian Morgan, he has been very positive, very open. I know he communicates back to his members consistently on this for those that aren't with us in these groups, and we really appreciate the time and effort that we've had with him. We know that any time you're making changes like this, it takes time to build that capacity to really have everyone believe in the vision of where we're going. So as much as we know it's taken some time, we're very pleased with the progress we've made. So over these next three slides, I have quotes from several of the coalition members. We didn't have time to bring everyone up to the podium tonight, so they're obviously there for you all to read, but I am going to highlight just a couple. And Brian could not be here tonight, I don't know if he, he had surgery and recovery, so he's been texting me and sending me things today. He really was disappointed he was not able to join us. So I am going to share his quote. He expresses his gratitude for the district's efforts to work through this process, and shares his confidence that the work we are doing this year, and in the years ahead, will have lasting benefits for both students and staff. The next quote I want to share is Julie Payne, who is with us here tonight, our principal from Bluffsview. She's actually serving on two of our coalitions. She highlights that "change is a constant in education, and while it can be slow and complex, it's essential to have opportunities for discussion and problem solving. These discussions are a key part of building a shared understanding and a broader support." On the next page, there are several more from, I think this is mainly our therapists, speech language and OT. So Lisa Forsyth and Molly Lichens, who are both from our preschool pilot program, share that they're grateful for the opportunity to be a part of the preschool evaluation team. "We've enjoyed piloting new processes that challenge us to think outside the box, explore new experiences, and deepen our understanding of our field. This experience has helped me grow as a speech language pathologist, and I look forward to continuing to make positive changes in Worthington Special Ed Department to better meet the needs of our students and community." And then the last one I will share is from Morgan Tressel, who's a middle school intervention specialist, shares that she's thankful for the opportunity to be a part of the guiding coalition. "The experience has shown that her input plays a meaningful role in shaping and improving the special education processes." So just a couple of the highlights there, and you can read through the rest of them. Okay, and with that, I will take any questions?
Thank you so much, Kim. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Thanks, Kelly. I'll start us off.
Thanks.
I will echo gratitude for the presentation, and gratitude for everyone that has been involved and continues to be involved to date. I'm not at all surprised that one of the strengths of those who are stepping up to help is collaboration, because I think that's something that we as a district should be very proud of, something that we do well, and keeping that student who's going to benefit from that collaboration in mind. Some of my, I only have a few. Some of them are in the weeds, because there are things I forget, and some of them are big pictures. So the in-the-weed ones is, can you remind me what a Tier 2 level of support is?
Okay. So we look at, Tier 1 is the regular education classroom, so what every student receives. And you can kind of think of it as Tier 3 is special education. So Tier 2 would be like that MTSS. So the student has presented with some areas of need, so we're going to provide some intervention for those students, and then we'll monitor the progress of that intervention to see how they do.
Perfect. Thank you. That helps. You mentioned that you are, with regards to instructional coaching, obviously that's something that will have to be long-term, right?
Yeah.
And that the biggest challenges you're facing, at least thus far, are keeping it cost-neutral.
Right.
Of course, that's going to be a challenge.
Right.
Is it more, and maybe it's in both, but is it more in the time area, and then having time to pull people out and actually provide that instruction, or is it in the resource area?
So it's kind of both. So we've talked about different models. So right now, we have full-time coaches, our elementary coaches are full-time coaches. There are also models out there where a really strong content teacher may spend a period or two coaching, right? So there's a lot of different, when I say we're brainstorming, a lot of different ways that coaching can be provided. Then the other piece of that is who gets that coaching. As a first-year teacher, they still have responsibilities with RESA, they're just learning, like when is the best time to provide that coaching? Is coaching an option, or should everyone receive coaching? So a lot of that is still kind of in the process of conversation and discussion.
Okay.
So it's kind of both in terms of who and how to get, you know, the staff members, and who it should be.
I feel like that's just good for us to keep on our radar from a cost standpoint, that if we reach a point where something more is needed, that we understand that. And then I had, I think my other big-picture question is, have there been questions from parents thus far this year? Have you seen an impact on, I don't want to say the impact, because it could be questions or comments, like what have you guys fielded, what you feel like has been the main area of feedback from the parents in the space?
So specifically from the audit, I can't say that we've had a lot personally. We meet with a group of key communicators from the special ed group, so Shannon, my coordinators, and myself, and so we've updated those groups in terms of the progress each time we meet with them, and then they share out within their buildings. We work obviously on a weekly basis with the parents at Sutter Park when they bring, because they bring their children in for those meetings. And then moving forward, as we're making any adjustments in any type of intervention models, in terms of that second scoop of support, we'll work with those families in reference to what, you know, is best for their individual children.
Okay. So nothing really directly focused on things that are being made based upon the evaluation that was done?
Right.
Okay. And just one more, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
When you were talking about the workload process and the next steps, you indicated you were looking to identify pressure points and then make tweaks. And I assume those tweaks are just going to be identifying those whose workload are more than what they should be because of perhaps the subject matter expertise that they have.
Right. So in the end, our hope and how this will work is, once the process, the tool is in place, when we have a teacher come to us, because we don't work, our teachers do not go over their caseloads, so they always have within, you know, the caseload number is there. So that's always okay, it's more that workload piece. So if a teacher is feeling that they have a caseload, that their workload is too much, we'll be able to use this tool within that building staff. So, and we'll just, I keep referring to the elementaries, but in most elementaries, we have three general intervention specialists that carry equitable, somewhat equitable numbers of caseloads. So we would be able to run the services that are necessary in that building amongst those three intervention specialists, and level out that workload piece for them.
That's excellent. I don't have any other questions, just again, kudos. Change is hard, and you guys are talking about change in a number of different areas, so kudos for being able to navigate that simultaneously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Does anyone else have any questions for Kim? Okay, go ahead.
I will echo Nikki, and just thank everyone who's been involved in all of this. This is such critical work that you all are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
For your attention to this. Mine are kind of follow-ups to yours. I was curious about the coaching and also the parent involvement, and I didn't know if you could maybe go into a little bit more detail about what Nathan Kellenberger, sorry, his role is. What exactly does that job look like?
Yeah, so he, in fact, it's highlighted, he helped us create his slides. So if you look at the top there, he was highlighting the areas that he has spent the bulk of his time on. So his was a leadership role to be over behavior and mental health. So over the past several years across the district, and most districts, we've seen an increase in that need for that level of support. So the recommendation from New Solutions was to have one leadership role focused on that area, so they could make sure that those services were provided equitably across the district. So that was the primary purpose of that position. He also, as a part of the behavior piece of that, the PBIS is those building plans for kind of like that Tier 1 level of support for behavioral support across the buildings. Obviously, we have a strong team of mental health specialists, a couple of board-certified behavior analysts in the district, so they're all working under him as well, and he's creating more of that umbrella level of support for them.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And the coaching has not actually been put into practice yet, is that my understanding?
So we have coaches, the elementaries have coaches, and then we have some coaching a little bit at some middle school. But the recommendation was to provide our secondary teachers with some coaching for students that struggle in their classroom. So not just for special ed students, just for general ed teachers to be provided coaching to help them serve the needs of all the students that come to them.
So they have been provided some type of coaching?
At the high school, we have not had coaching. We have some at the middle school. That's why the focus has been on secondary.
Gotcha. So that's been provided at the middle school, is that, what does that coaching look like, I guess, in practice? Are you all like meeting face-to-face, or are you providing them with, you know, documentation?
Yeah, so Kelly Wegley works with the coaching team, our current coaching team, and so they meet and plan out like what the coaching's going to look like in each building. So there's specific areas, I'd have to get back to you on exactly what the middle school's coaching support looks like in terms of who's receiving that at the middle school level right now.
Okay. Yeah, like Nikki said, that obviously takes time.
Yeah.
That's a culture shift, that's, you know, that's big work there. And my last question was in regards to parents and some of the changes that they will see being made. You know, I understand that you had a representative on the group, the work group that was working on this, and also you said that there's the key communicators who communicate to their networks as well. But the parents who have children in these programs that are seeing the shifts, are they, are they being told what's happening? Are they being communicated with, you know, explaining? You went through the workload versus caseload, which I think makes a lot of sense.
Right.
Are they, is there outreach there, I guess?
Yeah. So really, the initiatives from the audit, there's nothing really specific in terms of program-wise, other than that secondary intervention piece. That may, the structure of where they receive their secondary intervention time may look a little bit different as we move forward, as we're trying to build the capacity for that second scoop, which may change some language on an IEP service, like who's providing it and where they're receiving it versus, you know, last year. So we'll be working individually with them at that point. But workload-wise, it's kind of more a teacher, you know, based support, so we're working with the teachers on that. Certainly, if parents had concerns about that, they brought to the teachers. The teachers always come to us if they're feeling, right? That's kind of how the initiative of this started.
Okay. And I know there's, you know, federal mandates and things like that, so you all are, is that Nathan that's keeping tabs on all of that?
Is it what I'm saying?
Is that Nathan Kellenberger?
No, so you mean in terms of the caseload numbers? Yeah, we, yeah, we monitor all of that.
Great. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amber. Going to this side.
Do you want to go this way?
Go ahead.
Sure. Well, I'll be third to say thank you or fourth, actually. To say thank you. And to echo, it's, it's hard to change the norm. And we all fight that. I fight it a lot. And so I appreciate everybody's engagement in that. And, and, and the fact that it is a group of people from every, like everywhere we touch students is represented, which is awesome. I have just a couple of questions. I think when you were talking about workload process and doing that at the secondary level, I remember Nate Levinson talking about that when he came to talk to us the first time. And it makes sense to me. And so I have a very basic question, which is, as we work through what that looks like at the secondary level, are we going to look at what that looks like, are you, not me, not involved, going to look at what that looks like at the middle school and elementary school level as well?
Yeah. So, and the reason that was focused more on the secondary level is when they did their data research, it showed that they felt that we could structure things differently at the secondary level for the students to benefit more from that. At the elementary level, like the example I gave, we already have, a lot of our elementary intervention specialists are focusing on a content area. And so they have that sharing of students so that the, the most content and most effective teacher is working with the students in their identified areas. So we're already probably doing it a little bit more at the secondary level or at the elementary level, just because of the structure of the, of the day.
And it just makes sense. I think all students will benefit, the less that we pull kids out and, right? So that everybody has some consistency and less disruption and less labeling and things like that. So, I mean, I, I love it. And I have another really kind of off-the-wall question, but I've talked to Nathan Kellenberger about his parenting programs, and you did mention those. I know he's going to talk more about those in April. But as I think about what that looks like, reaching out to the community and then thinking about what that looks like when you're trying to ID kids at the preschool level in the community, I was just wondering if, like, you've identified any overlaps there or any places where we could utilize those opportunities to really kind of understand what's going on in our school community?
Right. So I think Dr. Winland, Nathan worked with you. Like, I think they've had some conversation around the preschool for the positive parenting.
We're actually offering our first parents in class this Wednesday with childcare and then my community doing, becoming preventative. There's a lot of support for Nathan.
And Shannon Daly, our parent mentor, is also going through that with Nathan.
Those are, I, I could geek out about that for a really long time. It's, I mean, it's super, super exciting to like, just have the opportunity to go into the community and understand what's happening and not just identify kids earlier, but just work with the parents earlier. I mean, there's so much research behind that. So I'll, I'll stop. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And number four here, we really love the collaboration and that you're all here and so invested in this program. I had some questions, but they've all been asked. I'm very curious to hear about the positive parenting in April when Nathan comes. I think it's great that we're offering it and now learning more people are getting certified in it, so.
Well, this will be good feedback for me to give him tomorrow, because he's going to ask.
We want to hear about it.
Yes. He'll be well-prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the benefit of going last is that all my questions haven't been answered. Um, I, you know, I just had a couple of questions that were answered, the key communicators and just how they were being brought into this conversation. I do have a clarification question, and maybe you already answered this, about the coaching at the secondary level. And did New Solutions give you a solution about how you provide that service for our teachers?
So, again.
That is cost neutral.
Yes, yes. And that's why it's a, a multi-year process. So sometimes it may even be looking at attrition as, as things shift and needs change. If we find that we have someone leave or a position becomes, an FTE becomes open that we no longer need and we can repurpose staff, you know, for that base, you know, looking at our resources in the district and where the needs are. That's one way that it's been addressed in some districts. Other is like I shared, if you have a teacher that stays in the classroom for multiple periods and then does a couple of periods of coaching each day. So he didn't really tell us. That's why I think this process has, I feel like we've gone a little slower, you know, to move farther. But it's, it's been a lot more conversation. I feel like we've spent with that group and a lot more breakout groups, kind of brainstorming around those opportunities. So that's one that will definitely be on the horizon a little bit in terms of those details.
Thank you for that. So just, you know, again, thank you all for taking the time, making the time for, to go through this process. I know it's not easy. And thank you for sharing this with us so that we can be supportive.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Bowers.
So, thank you. I do want to say again, thank you to our team that's here. You don't have to stay for the rest of this. So don't, don't feel badly because I'm talking and you get up and walk out. It's totally fine. That's normal. We know, we get that. So as, as people are transitioning, I will just start and say, like the board, I want to share my appreciation. I, I am incredibly proud of our team to undertake the audit is, is a level of vulnerability in and of itself. That was a year-long process. And then we, as you can see, are faithfully working through a process to try to make meaningful change and meaningful change for kids and for adults. And we're doing it in, in a way that we believe in Worthington, which is, we want to work collaboratively with our teachers, with our administrators, to create what we hope is a better system. So it's big change, and we will be working through it for the next few years, right? So this, a lot of planning this year. I think parents will begin to see some changes next year and then each year, some, some larger changes after that, as the system happens. So we appreciate that. In Worthington, that our mission's to empower a community of learners who will change the world. Obviously, we believe our special ed program is, is on track to do that. But we work to accomplish that through four vision statements. And the first is, we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. And I'm going to change the gears from special ed and say, as a district, we're committed to aligning our work with the competencies and durable skills outlined in our Portrait of a Learner. So as a reminder, that's confident communicator, critical thinker, adaptable leader, responsible collaborator, and resilient learner. And we know that these skills are essential for success in our evolving world. So in this spirit, we're continuing to explore the transformative potential of artificial intelligence with a hope of enhancing teaching, learning, and innovation in our schools. So to support this with the work that Angie's been doing, in addition to helping with the special ed audit, she's been carefully vetting AI platforms for teacher and student use. So really quickly here, we'll be announcing that we're opening a number of AI platforms for our teachers. Not yet for students, but for our teachers, platforms that have been vetted through our technology department, meet student data privacy concerns and laws, and that we think will make a difference. So these platforms are designed to promote personalized learning, streamline instructional tasks, and provide opportunities to innovate in the classroom. Additionally, later this spring, we'll ask the Board of Education to adopt policy for artificial intelligence. The current draft policy, which the board has not yet seen, but on AI tools, allows staff and students to use these tools responsibly, balancing their benefits with the need for academic integrity, skill development, protection of staff and student data. But in general, we want to present an open policy where students may use AI tools for assignments unless their teacher explicitly prohibits it for a specific assignment. So there's two ways to look at policy. One is to have a closed policy, and you could only use it if you are told you can. We want to do that the opposite because we believe that that's going to be more like the real world, which there may be times where you're asked not to use it, but otherwise, if you're not, that you will be allowed to use it. So teachers would retain discretion over AI usage in the classroom and including exceptions for when, you know, citing AI contributions. But we want to have an open policy. So we'll talk more about that as a board as we get into that this spring. But we want you to know that that's coming as a way to maximize student potential. Our second vision statement's, we will provide a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically. In Worthington schools, we're glad to welcome all children. So our mission every day is to empower a community of learners who will change the world. This community includes almost 1,500 learners who speak 65 different languages and come to us from 99 countries around the world. So as we all know, recent changes in federal policy and priorities related to immigration laws and rights have become a source of concern and possibly distress for some Worthington students, their families, and the staff who serve them. So while laws and policies are political by definition and the personal perspectives on any policy are wide-ranging, what Worthington staff share in common is a commitment to be kind to kids. So this kindness includes a sensitivity to students' feelings and an awareness of practical ways that their families may be impacted by changes in the law and in the community climate. And we want our community to know that we're committed to acting with care and compassion for every child and for their family. Our third vision statement's, we will provide consistent communication and promote dialogue with our community. Just as an update, last week, we met with both our internal and external key communicator teams. Just want to say that I appreciate the time our community members and our teaching staff invest in talking about and providing feedback to our school district. As a community of learners, we really think these conversations are invaluable. And then our fourth vision statement's, we will be responsible and transparent with our community's resources. And this is just a mid-year food service update. So the food service department anticipates serving approximately 1,070,000 meals this school year. That's 12,000 more meals than we served last year. Our meal benefit eligibility, our free and reduced, is up 154 students for this year. Lunch prices remain stable. So our elementary lunch at $2.75, secondary at $3, K-12 breakfast at $1.60. And those prices have been stable since the 2011, 2012 school year. And then our self-supporting food service fund anticipates a 5% decrease, given reductions in federal funding. So our beginning balance was 4.5 million. Our current fund balance remains healthy at 4.4 million. So with that, I feel like I was all over the place in four different updates. But there's a lot that goes on in Worthington schools. President Davis, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. Does anyone have any questions about the report? Okay. All right. TJ, you're up. Treasurer's report, please.
Thank you. As Amber mentioned last week, or last meeting at her, in her legislative update, we have a new legislative chamber, new year, and several bills were introduced last week on both sides. Unfortunately, the rhetoric coming out of the State House at this time doesn't sound all that positive for continuing the progression of the, of the school funding formula. Senator Huffman called it, or House Member Huffman now called it unsustainable and that they aren't bound to see it through. However, at the same time, he introduced a bill to decrease the income tax. So I don't know if anything is sustainable if we reduce the revenue that is going to sustain it. But the governor is expected to unveil his budget next week, and we'll go from there. I only say all that because we continue to see costs escalating, especially in central Ohio. Labor costs are still high. We see on our agenda tonight, the rejection of bids because those bids came in higher than expected. And so as we see costs continue to escalate, unfortunately, it's likely that I will have to reduce our revenue projections come this May. And so we're going to talk over the next several meetings about several things, enrollment projections decreasing, and we'll unveil our responsible staffing plan to try to address that, to try to make our goals to, to stay off the ballot until 2028. But things are going to get tighter, and we have to keep that in mind as we, as we look at what our options are. Secondarily, we are meeting with leaders of Swim Inc. tomorrow to really begin to figure out how our relationship is going to work now that we are going to own the natatorium. Since we are funding the natatorium with tax-exempt bonds, our relationship is, is going to change. They're going to act as an operator, which is very different than our current structure where we just lease them for the facility and then they make all the decisions. We have to, we have to be compliant with fairly strict IRS rules regarding that. So we're going to try to sort all that out starting tomorrow and come up with a game plan. Our current facility use agreement runs through this June. And so depending on where construction is, we may have to extend that into the fall, but we'll wait and see. That is all I have.
Thank you, TJ. Are there any questions for TJ regarding his report? Okay. Let's move on to board committee reports and announcements. Does anyone have any committee reports or announcements?
I have several, so I'll try to be brief. It was a busy two weeks. Stephanie and I met with the facility committee with Tim Garing and Jeff Eble and had a great meeting on the 14th. We learned a lot about the different departments under facilities and a lot about what's going on with various projects. And it was really good timing because the, two evenings later, I was the board rep at PTAC. And we always give a little update. So I was able to update them on things that we learned at the facility meeting, like this summer sign replacement will be at Worthington Park or playground at Worthington Park, signs at Liberty Sutter and Worthington Park. And they were all pretty excited to hear that we're still, you know, moving forward with the new signs and playgrounds. And I also updated them on what we learned about high school timing of projects and expecting things in January of '26 to be close to being done. So they were pretty excited about that. And natatorium's on schedule and looking at next fall for that. And then we talked a lot about our operations center, which we call WOC, W-O-C, the Worthington Operations Center. So now, when you hear that term, it's our Cineese, Cineese Building over on Huntley. And I think our next facility committee meeting, we're going to actually meet over there and check out that building. So I kind of combined those two committee reports into one. Also, at PTAC, Angie was there and talked about Portrait of a Learner roadmap. And they were all very interested in hearing about the Portrait of a Learner and how that's going in the schools. She talked about the ELA curriculum pilot and recommendation that will be seen soon. And the other announcement, and I think you know this, Kelly, that there is no February 20th meeting. And then they talked about their scholarship committee and reviewing scholarships. And one of the members mentioned, well, maybe a board member wants to come help look at the scholarship applications because it's such a good way to learn about our students. So it's one of those things that you get a stack of applications, everything's redacted about names and addresses, and you have a, a rating scale and work on those and kind of spend a weekend on it kind of thing. So if anyone's interested, they would love help on that. So that was a good meeting. So I'm sorry, whoever was February has to miss it.
It's me.
So hopefully next.
I'll go to another one.
Yeah. As the library liaison, I always get a copy of their monthly board meeting agenda, and I glance at it to see if there's any budget items or trustee items or anything that we may have to vote on. But also, about every quarter, they talk about their community engagement. And I just thought I'd share a couple of their outreach programs that they have, because I think it's pretty amazing that our libraries work so hard with our schools. In November, they met with Worthington Kilborn High School students. And it looks, they have a book discussion group once a month with kids from Kilborn. They talked, they read last month, The Reappearance of Rachel Price, and next month, they're going to read Almost American Girl. So the students interested in those books have a chance to discuss with a librarian. In November, they also met with Bramby at their Care After Program, and they explored the wonder of Ozobots. So that- So that's my new word for the week. It's an interactive coding robot. So they came and worked with the kids on that. And then they worked with a group of students at Thomas Worthington High School in collaboration with the YWCA on the Bright Futures Program. And that is a program on leadership that the YWCA offers, and that's the first time it's been brought into our schools, and the library helped do that. So lots going on with the library, and I enjoy seeing their agenda and everything that's going on, so I'll try to share it. Martin Luther King celebration last week, Ms. Toya and the students and Cory for recording, the video was great. I've been getting comments and comments about that, that people really enjoy that. And of course, the Paffor, we appreciate TJ and his group and Vicky for putting this together. I've gotten a lot of comments from neighbors and friends that are retired, so they're not real involved in the schools, but they like looked at this and really appreciated getting it. So thank you for that. So I will stop now, and you can follow up if there's anything else on the Facility Committee.
No, you did a very good job covering it. That was my only committee. I will just add a couple things. Asked a lot of questions about buses, to the extent that Jeff thought maybe I wanted to buy a bus, which I don't. I just think it's interesting that, you know, we're able, we have some buses that retire, we have more coming in, and, you know, we have a schedule for how long we keep them and how many we bring on every year, and then they go back to auction and go back into the wild away from us. So no one else is probably interested in that. One thing that Jennifer didn't mention that I think will be of interest to a lot of people is that the front lawn will be available for the Fourth of July at Thomas. So that's going to be great, that we can bring fireworks. Yeah, well, yes, the front currently, but will not long-term be paved. We will have grass again. No one worry, we have grass. That was the other big thing. I also learned that you can hire dogs to sniff for bedbugs or chase geese. So you all can have that information now. And that is all I have.
Okay, well, good luck topping that one. Go ahead, Vicky.
Okay, I don't mind short. I do have my finger on the button. No committee meetings, just a reminder to everyone that the Worthington Education Foundation's Gala is this Friday, the 31st. There are still tickets available. All proceeds go ultimately to benefit our students and our teachers because they are very generous with their grant giving and supporting areas of needs that don't directly fall under something that the district can fund or that PTAs can fund, and they're able to slide in there and there have. If you haven't had a chance to do so, go take a look at their new website. They do a really nice job of highlighting some of the prior grants that they've been able to support. So, and oh, now I forget what the descriptor. I've had several people ask me attire.
Cocktail.
But it's not formal cocktail.
It's not black tie, but dressier than work.
There you go, not black tie, dressier than work, snazzy, was that the word? Snazzy casual, was that what you said, Kim? I thought that was a great descriptor. Snappy casual, yeah, I mean, like fun, right?
Cocktail.
It is different. So there's, I don't know, there's, I think that there'll be
Anything.
A wide variety, yes. Most importantly, just come if you're able to, right? Yes, you'll be very welcome regardless of your attire. So.
Thank you, Nikki. Amber?
Little bit of a legislative update. So just some housekeeping items for OSBA because they're kind of revamping the whole like legislative liaison thing now. So Facts in a Flash will be returning to your inboxes soon. You might have noticed it had a hiatus, so it's coming back soon. Also, OSBA is going to be sending guidance and policy recommendations regarding bills that were passed in lame duck, so keep an eye out for that. Their legal and policy teams are working on that. But as far as State House news, so the House and the Senate unveiled their priority bills, which are basically House Bill 1 through 10 and Senate Bill 1 through 10. So the ones that, you know, I kind of flagged that pertain to us, so House Bill 3, Stephanie will be very excited to hear, is the School Bus Safety Act, since you like school buses, I guess. This is the one you'll remember, they discussed it last year, but it's come back and it's a priority bill now, so, you know, the likelihood of passage has increased. But this would give 25 million to the Department of Education and Workforce to create a school bus grant fund and allow school districts to apply for these grant funds, customize to districts' needs. Also would increase penalties for passing a school bus for motorists and designate August as School Bus Safety Month. So that is one bill to keep an eye on. House Bill 10 would be more for our food service team. This bill would regulate imitation meat and egg products, so it would prohibit misbranded milk or egg products that were like lab-created from being used in the cafeterias. And that would require a policy change if it was passed because the school districts would need some type of policy on that. So those are the two in the House that are priority bills that pertain to public education. House Bill, or Senate Bill, sorry, 3 in the Senate, that's the one that I think TJ was maybe talking about that would phase out Ohio's income tax. That would phase us down to a flat rate of 2.75% over two years. Some historical perspective on that, we had a decrease in the income tax four years ago, and then two years ago, they consolidated brackets, so this is just more of a continuation and a loss of revenue that, like TJ said, is not being replaced because the federal funds that we had four years ago and two years ago when these were implemented for COVID are long gone. So problem for the state a little bit. Senate Bill 7, another priority bill that's regarding instruction of substance abuse. So I guess that would require that public and chartered, non-public school students would be educated in the harmful effects of substance abuse, which seems to me like we do, but I didn't read that bill, so I don't know exactly what that is, but Senate Bill 7. Anticipating changes to property tax, but Senator Blessing is on the record as saying that they're going to hold off on introducing any kind of legislation until the budget bill's underway, which like TJ said, the governor has to release his executive budget by February 3rd, then the House is going to be working on that for the next six months. Budget's going to be tighter than in years past, so, you know, Huffman, like we said last time, is on the record as saying that the school funding is unsustainable, but I guess he had a caucus meeting that got kind of lively, so I've heard, and he got an earful from a lot of his members, caucus members of the Republican Caucus, that stressed the need to fund public education and continuing to fund the formula, which is going into the third phase in 2025. So we'll see. OSBA, we had the first, they're, like I said, starting these new things for legislative liaisons, and so they had a Zoom call today, and it came up. And one of the things that they said to express to the districts and the boards would be to advocate with your local lawmakers, but tell the story of how these state dollars, I'm looking at Vicky, are, you know, helping our local districts. And explain, you know, that levies on the ballot is not guaranteed source of revenue and not a decision that school districts take lightly, and basically tell the story of how funding from the state impacts us locally and what would be lost if it ended. So that was OSBA's advice because, you know, it sounds like Huffman certainly does have some, you know, disagreement within his own caucus. So I think, you know, that could be helpful. So that's the budget bill. Oh, voucher accountability legislation, you'll remember that from last GA, that was Gail Manning, and Bill Sykes, I think, was on that. It got pretty far, but it didn't make it through. That's the one that would have accountability for the charter schools, but it's expected to be reintroduced in some form this GA, but haven't seen it come up yet. So I think that's it. And I just had, committee-wise, I had external and internal key communicators, and like, Dr. Bowers says, it's always just such a good sounding board. It's so good to hear their perspective, you know. He always provides these, and I just reviewed it a second ago, just, you know, handouts of some of the things that he wants to talk about. And I know with external, I don't even know that you got to those handouts because they wanted to talk about other things. They wanted to talk about the possible elimination of the Department of Education and what that meant for us. They wanted to talk about ICE rates, they wanted to talk about AI and RTRI and the bathroom bill. And so we discussed all that. And, you know, I think that the people I talk to in the community, I know you all talk to a lot of people too, I mean, those are kind of the things that are on a lot of people's minds these days. So Dr. Bowers had all the answers, like he always does, for that group, but that was certainly something that came up in that meeting. But I think that's all I had.
Thank you. I appreciate the, well, although you said, but the legislative update, I think is just really important, especially now. You talked about, I just have a quick question, and you may not know the answer to this, but for OSBA, it's supposed to be giving guidance, is that to people all school districts or just school districts in which they manage their policy? Do you know?
That's a great question. I assume, but you're right, I guess not all districts are OSBA members. So I assume that it's just the OSBA members that will be getting the guidance from the legal and policy teams.
Okay.
Yeah, they didn't stress that, but I, you know, it was an OSBA call with us, so.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. I also went to internal, external key communicators, and I really love this thought exchange. So thought exchange is not something I had heard of before, but I like that the internal key communicators and external can get, ask questions ahead of time that Dr. Bowers and our administration can review so that they can come and we can have a productive conversation. And so I think it's a really helpful tool, so I really like seeing that. And then I like to see all the questions, so that's really helpful, that's just a point to that. Think that Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration was amazing. I appreciate everyone who attended that, and I appreciate the committee and Toya and seeing our students. I know the district shared that video that the students participated in, and we had our students there, which was just so sweet, and they were so excited. I was sitting right behind one of the students that was in the video, and you could just tell that he was just super pumped, that he was up on the big screen. So that was awesome. Science Day, I hear, was amazing. I had to miss it, but I heard it was really great. And then just a reminder that we have the Groundhog event next week with the chambers, so just let TJ and Jen know if you're able to make it. Dr. Bowers will be speaking in our library, so it will be in the City of Columbus, or City of Columbus, sorry, City of Worthington will be giving an update at that event, so that will be a good time. But that's all I have for that. All right, moving on to actions recommended by the treasurer, Mr. Cusick.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the organizational meeting and first regular meeting as presented in enclosure E1, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the appropriation modification listed in the agenda. This is related to Fund 499, our miscellaneous state grant funds, and the tech cred program that the governor has introduced. Interestingly enough, it corresponds with what Dr. Bowers said earlier, we are getting the AI credential, and so as we, as more of our folks get trained, we get more reimbursement to offset the cost of the trainer, and this is specific in the AI. So we are increasing this fund 120,000, which will be a pass-through to the trainer.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next agenda item is the Personnel Consent Agenda. Dr. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda. That's items F2 through F11 on your agenda. Items F2 through F11, please.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, actions recommended by the superintendent new business. Dr. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve Item G1. Item G1 is the acceptance of the donations listed on the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve Item G2. Item G2 is a recommended motion to accept the proposal, waive any informalities, and award a contract to electrical service professionals in the amount of $392,015 with a construction contingency of $39,201 for engineering package 2024-1, emergency generator replacement projects. So that was a lot. Item G2, please.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3 is, or I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve Item G3. Item G3 is a recommended motion to reject the bids received for District HVAC projects and the authorized re-advertising of the project. So the low bid was more than 20% over the published estimate, so we're going to reject those bid, and we'd like to begin anew. Item G3, please.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions or concerns? Okay, TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebling-Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, are there any requests, questions, or concerns from the board? Any questions?
I just have one related to our upcoming work session. And I don't know if you want things in writing or any requests for things to address during that session, but I want to make a suggestion that we just spend a little bit of time talking about the Safety Committee, since it's newly formed. I've had a few questions, and I think that we all need to be on the same page as to what the objectives of that committee are going to be, in addition to board service, who else is going to serve on that committee, whether or not that committee is what they're responsible for, and whether or not that is new responsibility or responsibility that's being taken over by someone that was previously with the district from an administrative standpoint. I don't have anything else for the work session, but I wanted to request that we discuss that then.
Absolutely. Okay. Yep, I wrote that down. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Moving on to calendar, our next meeting is our work session on Monday, February 10 at 6:30. We haven't really talked about an agenda. I know that we moved our work session from December, and in that December meeting, we were going to continue talking about goals. And so that's part of what I was thinking about that would be part of that agenda conversation. And then I will add the Safety Committee to that for sure. So if you have any other suggestions of things you want to talk about during that time, if you'd like, email us this week to let us know so we have agenda prep on Monday, the 3rd of February.
Is it possible to get, and this may be in our shared drive, so I just haven't looked for it for a while, but we had notes from the last meeting where we talked about goals. Is that, can we, is there something somewhere that we can kind of give ourselves a refresher?
I think it's in our shared drive.
I think it is in the shared drive, and I don't mind just pulling it up and emailing it to everyone again, just so that
Yeah, that would be helpful. That'd be great.
I know what that's like.
Okay.
But we all should have access to it.
Good question. Thank you. Access, but no editing.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I feel like we were all, I feel like we were all in it at the end. No?
No, we kept, for you to keep ownership of it, so that we can view it but not edit it. We will edit it during our work session.
Okay, very good. Well, then I will make sure I add you as an editor so that you can take that role going forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And the following meeting will be on Monday, February 24th. Oh, sorry, let me backtrack. February 10. I do think we do have a few business items to do on that day, so just be mindful of that, that there will be some business items on that agenda. Okay, so then now, Monday, February 24th, we will hear about the science of reading and curriculum adoption, and Dr. Bowers will represent that, that there will be some business items on that agenda. Okay, so then now, Monday, February 24th, we will hear about the science of reading and curriculum adoption, and Dr. Bowers will present on the responsible staffing plan. And then Monday, March 10, at 6:30, will be an update on the master's facilities plan phase two. So exciting things happening. All right. May I please have a motion to enter into executive session to consider matters required to be confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes. Motion carries. We will go into executive session now, and then we will come out, and we will adjourn. You are free to leave, or you can stay, but thank you for being here.